It's our actual legislative meeting for today. We have some important guests that are in the room, but before I do that, we always start out with a silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance. So if you could take a moment for a silent prayer, appreciate it. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could introduce ourselves on the dais.
Chrissy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, Vice President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to excuse our President Denise Streethouse.
Second.
Commissioner O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Very good. So if we could just approve the minutes of the previous session, that would be great. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Very good. We have presentations and Commissioner Reese, are you going to lead that?
Yes, thank you Commissioner O'Dumas. And I don't know, do you have it in front of you as well?
I don't have a proclamation.
Okay, I was gonna, okay, okay. I have a proclamation today honoring the Winton Woods High School Women's Basketball Team 2025 State Champs. Whereas the Winton Woods High School Women's Basketball Team has exemplified excellence, determination, and unbreakable Warrior spirit, achieving a perfect 27-0 record. Y'all can clap on that. And cementing their place in history as an unstoppable force on the court. Whereas through tireless dedication and unwavering teamwork, these phenomenal student athletes dominated the Eastern Cincinnati Conference, finishing 16-0 in the league. Give that a round of applause. Securing back-to-back league championships and claiming their third ECC title in the past four years. Whereas the Warriors' extraordinary journey to the pinnacle of Ohio high school basketball was marked by championship grit as they conquered district, regional, and state titles, proving their dominance at every level of competition. Whereas in 2025 State Championship, whereas in the 2025 State Championship game, Winton Woods delivered a commanding 70-55 victory over Anthony Wayne, securing their place as the best in Ohio while defeating eight teams with 20 or more wins throughout the season. An undeniable testament to their elite skill, discipline, and resilience. Whereas this historic achievement not only brings immense pride to Winton Woods High School, but also serves as an inspiration to the entire Hamilton County community, showcasing the power of perseverance, leadership, and teamwork. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of its residents and the entire community, proudly recognizes and congratulates the Winton Woods High School Women's Basketball Team for their 2025 State Championship victory and their remarkable season of perfection and triumph. In witness whereof, we extend our deepest admiration and appreciation to the coaches, players, staffs, family members, supporters who made this championship journey possible. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby declare Thursday, April 3, 2025, as Winton Woods High School Women's Basketball State Champions Day in all of Hamilton County, and it's signed by all three of our commissioners. Congratulations. And before you have comment, I'd like to open it up for Commissioner O'Dumas, who is the former Mayor of Forest Park and is County Commissioner. I know she's got some words, she's got the outfit.
Just a few words, yeah. Thank you so much. So happy to have all of you here. As far as I have known Winton Woods for 30-plus years, I've lived there, and my son graduated from Winton Woods. We've always been Winton Woods strong, but this is something very special. So I'm just looking forward to what's to come for all of you in the future, wherever you decide to go. So thank you so much for coming. I congratulate you.
And I'm gonna ask that we have here today, we have the Superintendent Steve Penny, we have Principal Eric Martin. If a principal would come up, Coach Carlton Gray as well, and the interim AD Jeff Morell, if you all will step to the podium. And I know the principal, first of all, let me say that thank you so much. You guys put together a parade and you didn't waste much time, and I appreciate the invitation to join and be a part of this. I was talking to the girls earlier, I said, "I used to play basketball." Now these knee, I'm telling y'all now, protect your knees, because these knees are, they're aching, but it really, it's really hard to win a state championship. You could have a perfect season, you could have a winning season. I mean, every day, it's go hard or go home. And I never got a chance to win a state championship, it was my dream. We lost in the regionals, and so there's a lot of disappointment. So to be able to overcome all of that and to get to where the girls were able to get to in your first state championship, and I tell you, football, I also acknowledged, we gave a proclamation for the football win in the state championship. And I'll tell you, when Winton Woods comes out there, I mean, Forest Park shuts down. I mean, Park Place was, I mean, it was popping, and I love the way the community, Springfield Township, Forest Park, Green Hills, everyone comes together. And we just wanted to make sure that you know that the entire Hamilton County has your back as well. And when I was there, I don't want to tell my age, but it was Forest Park High School. And now it's Winton Woods, and you guys are doing a phenomenal job. So, Mr. Martin, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you for acknowledging us today. It's really special for us to come down and be recognized by the whole county. That's pretty big for our young ladies, and we try to make sure that our students understand the importance of being prepared for next chapter. So in this chapter, they were able to achieve a state championship, which so many kids in Hamilton County that are playing basketball right now and would love to have been in their shoes. So we're extremely excited, we're extremely blessed to be in the position that we're in. Winton Woods High School is a special place. It's a special place. We serve about 1,300 kids, and you guys know as well as I do that schools are just a microcosm of society. So you deal with so many different things, but to have a group like these young ladies, special, special. So I really appreciate the opportunity for us to come down, and you guys acknowledge the young ladies' hard work. Go Warriors.
Yeah, thank you. I do have to acknowledge your head coach Carlton Gray. I mean, he's a legend. He's a legend in the basketball world. He's a legend.
I'm Coach Carlton Gray. I appreciate you all having us down here today. And I was a part of that football championship too, so I do take pride in that.
Said he was legendary.
It's, nothing needs to be said about these kids. It's a lot of hard work that goes into it. From April of last year, obviously all the way up until March 14 of this year, they dedicated their year to trying to accomplish this goal. And like you said, nothing's guaranteed. So for this group of kids to achieve, which is really impossible for a lot of teams, it's just a special feeling, and I'm just extremely proud of these young ladies.
Thank you very much. We're gonna, and Coach, Coach, one of your players, known as Strawberry, what was that? Was it 30-something points? What was it?
She had 28 points in the champions, in the state championship game as a freshman.
As a freshman. And I heard her interview, she said, "I was not gonna let our first loss beat a state championship." And you got, you ladies took care of business. So, Commissioner, do you want them to come up, or you want us to come down?
Why don't we, we want to sit, and they can come up, yeah, yeah. I'm, I always wait for you to get up so I don't ram you.
Yeah, but.
Go left, go left. I have two phones up the field. I have two phones up the field.
Okay, we need two more. And then, last one. Oh, not last one. Same where you're at. We're gonna do one more.
One, two.
Okay, and I'm gonna have um, maybe you can have um, would you two vote for proclamation? We did. Okay, okay, I'm just gonna take this one real quick and then. Okay, right here, one, two. One more. Let's do it. All right, we're good. Okay, let's just go down line again. Right here. Right here. Sorry. You there? Okay, we're good? We're good.
Thank you. I need to get one too with the principals call.
One more please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You got one yours. Here's another card.
Thank you. Where did the cards go? So this is last, okay. Alrighty. Okay, we're gonna, I know this is an exciting time. Yeah, I know this is an exciting time where we're gonna move on to our, yeah, we're gonna move on to our uh, that's okay, I'm, I, I, I can elevate, but I'm trying to be nice. So hello, everyone, we're gonna get on with our, yes, it is, but you were talking too much. We're gonna get on with our, our meeting. We have quite a few things to, to cover. So um, do we have, our next would be our public comments. Do we have any comments on the Zoom or anything? Okay, thank you. So we'll move right on. We have a few up here. Teresa Ashbrook?
Eastbrook.
Eastbrook, okay. Okay, sure. Welcome.
Thank you. I need my glasses. My name is Cynthia Hucker and I own a home on Old Corrine, which has been in my family since nineteen sixty-four, when my father built it. Hamilton County Engineers Office added a modification to my driveway that has caused serious damage to my driveway, my property and is now da- damaging my structures. It has also made my driveway extremely dangerous to get in and out of. I have bu- been trying to work with Eric Beck and his team for three years when I first notified them of the problem. For three years, I was met with denial of any responsibility, contradictory information and many delay tactics. Just recently, that narrative has changed with the scheduled resurfacing of Old Corrine. Now I've been told by Eric's team that my property is taking on an eighth of a mile of roadway water runoff and that my right of way will need to be replaced and that the road needs a full depth restoration. Even with this new information coming to light, there is still a refusal to repair any of the ongoing damage that my property has incurred. Eric has recommended that I sue Hamilton County. Two years ago, I reached out to the commissioners and Chris Harding was the only one to reply. He recommended I sue Eric Beck and the Hamilton County Engineers Office. I don't want to sue anyone. I just want my property be, to be fixed. They know the damage was caused by the road and the mod and I have been very reasonable in my requests. I am asking for your help. I am in a desperate situation. Every time it rains, my property is being damaged more and more. Please view the backstory. I emailed each of you along with the video link I provided. Eric can tell you his side of our story and I can tell you mine, but the video actually shows what is happening here. This has been a heartbreaking journey for me and my family and I am literally begging for your help. No one should have to watch their property be destroyed as I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time and I appreciate your comments. Um, I don't want to continue to pass you on. I hear your concerns, but I am going to say that our county administrator can talk with you, do a summation of where you are and then they can, he can get back to uh, the commissioners on that. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so Teresa, you wanted to speak after that?
Thank you. My name is Teresa Asbrook. I am Cynthia's big sister. Saved her life when she was a baby, so I, I took her on.
Pull your mic up just a little bit.
From that mo- moment on, and I can tell you some things that she maybe wouldn't tell you. She works from home. She has a small business of her own. It's not a big moneymaker, but it's her passion and her dream. And the damage to her property from this road water runoff is absolutely destroying this land. And this is the property that my dad built. And when I say built, I mean, he built it with his own two hands. The truck pulled up with the peas delivery and he put it together, did everything except for the plumbing and the electrical. And he's maintained it ever since until my sister and he switched properties after my mother's death. And at that point, she really has tried to keep it up and, and beautiful and a place for us to, to come as a family and join. And that is literally being washed down the hill. It's a steep kind of uh, downhill driveway to the home. And the damage on the landscaping is, is very, very seeable. It's been escalating and just snowballing over the past three years since she first kind of put two and two together and realized that this indeed is coming from the road. And she's done things, I mean, I have talked to her a bunch of sleepless nights, a bunch of digging trenches in front of her house to, to reroute water to protect the house. But I'm sorry to say that even of course with last night, they spent a lot of the night fighting the water that came in as they have every time we have any amount of substantial rain, they're ankle deep in water and they're partially finished basement. So this is really something that we are imploring and coming to you. Like she said, we're not, we're not people that want to sue the county. There's gotta be a better way. There's gotta be a way to take some responsibility for something that's gone wrong on a Hamilton County her property and fix it. And, and she's not asking for much. She's really just asking for help with the damage, not even to the structures, just the landscaping, the driveway itself. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And uh, this has been a longstanding problem and this board uh, tries to deal with issues right away. Whether or not it's something that you will agree with as a resolution, but at least we need to deal with it and get it uh, resolved. So thank you for your. Well, I'm getting emotional. So yeah, okay. Did you want to say something, Commissioner Reese?
No, I think you, I think you'd uh, handle that problem.
Okay.
I look forward to hearing uh, the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Falken. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this morning. Um, it seems like um, the morning to talk about stormwater issues. And um, that's what I'm here about also, as you know, and I'll keep this short because we'll be talking later in the day. But Hamilton County is wet and getting wetter. Um, with last night, Lunkin Airport got an inch and a half of rain. Um, other parts of our region, different amounts, but um, forecasted for four more days of heavy rain ahead of us means um, stormwater issues are really front and center. The impervious surface fee, as I've told you before, is a way that we can um, get everybody in the county involved in helping with the stormwater management, not um, relying on MSD to solve that problem because MSD alone just can't. And so um, I'm asking for your support for the impervious surface fee and uh, thank you for your time. We'll talk more.
Thank you. As you said, we'll be talking later today. Um, Erica Jaska? Not here, Eric? Oh, here she comes. Okay. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, like you said, my name is Erica Jaska. I'm a sustainability engineer from Cincinnati and I'm also um, talking for the support of the impervious surface fee today. Um, right now, we don't have a way to incentivize best management practices um, for impervious surfaces. Um, you know, how do we increase the amount of rain gardens, pervious surfaces? Um, and really just the best management practices um, across Cincinnati. So this is one way that we can do that. Um, the biggest reason though, I think the impervious surface fee is a good idea is for equity. Uh, like Larry said, uh, MSD can't handle, you can't be increasing rates continuously. They don't have the money for all of the maintenance they have coming up. Uh, so this is one of the ways that uh, we can increase revenue for our MSD to do the repairs that they need to do. We have less heartbreaking stories like yours. Um, so um, yeah, it's really an, or I think impervious surface fee is one way we can um, increase equity within the city of Cincinnati.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, those are our last uh, public comments. So I'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Comments from the Commissioner, Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. Um, I had a couple uh, comments. Uh, first of all, a couple of announcements. I want to make sure we don't lose this. The five one three relief bus and Office of Youth, our uh, youth employment kickoff is going to be April the twelfth. That's a Saturday at ten AM to three PM. It's going to be at Darrell Baptist Church in the West End. Um, and want to get parents and grandparents to make sure that they're bringing the proper uh, information that they need to bring because they're gonna be doing some uh, jobs on the si- on site. Last year was our first year kicking that off and we did it uh, in Evanston. We had about thirteen hundred youth, I'm told, or over a thousand youth that actually got jobs. And the youth were there, they were dressed, they were ready to be interviewed. It was just a, a beautiful sight to see. Uh, and we're also trying to work on having um, on the bus to have physicals so that they could get their work permit. So uh, again, if people can help spread the word, it's gonna be April the twelfth. That's next Saturday at Darrell Baptist Church in the West End next to the Hayes Porter uh, school. So um, please, hopefully they can, I think we have it on our website, five one three relief dot org. Uh, but find out what you need to bring so that you can uh, get interviewed on, on the spot. Uh, the other thing is Small Business Day. Small Business Day, uh, this will be our third annual Small Business Day. It's gonna take place on a Monday. That's why I want to make sure we get the word out. Monday, May the twelfth, Monday, May the twelfth, eight AM to one PM. Uh, it's going to be at Centas this year. We're normally at Sharonville Kavitcha Center, but I think they're overbooked now. Um, so we're gonna be at the Centas Center and that's gonna be May the twelfth and I'll, I'll have more uh, information about it, but I just want entrepreneurs to put it on your calendar. And there is free uh, registration. I know in the testimony, you talked about a home, you have a home business, you have a small business. You may want to also be at, be here um, at that event. So that's May the twelfth, eight AM to one PM and more to come. Uh, in addition, I'd like to offer condolences to the family of Alex Linzer, uh, who was once uh, the deputy at the Hamilton County Board of Elections. And his father passed away and I want to uh, certainly send condolences out to the Linzer family during this tough time. Uh, we also lost a major pillar, a major pillar in Hamilton County, uh, Francie Pepper. Francie Pepper uh, was one who loved Hamilton County. Uh, she was a very strong woman, came from strong family roots. Uh, most people know uh, John Pepper, which was, became her husband, but even before then, uh, her family was heavily involved in the fabric of Hamilton County. And Francie, in her own right, many organizations gave lots of money, philanthropy, uh, was a warrior for women. You know, one of the pictures I love of her and myself at the State House, we, they had a rally, standing up for women. And I looked up and it was a big rally with thousands of people there and I look up and there was Francie Pepper with her T-shirt on. We won't go back. And uh, even in all that we're dealing with now, she, she would put sometimes on Facebook or send a text, don't back down, we won't go back. Uh, so she was very big on uh, women's rights and women standing up for themselves and all the things that our Women and Girls Commission does. Uh, but she was a pillar, of course, her husband, John Pepper, who also, their family in general. But Francie Pepper was at the Fort Pride. She was the one that really was putting her foot down and uh, giving money to charities and standing up for women and giving back in the community. Uh, she just truly believed it and uh, you know, lived in Wyoming. They could have went, you know, somewhere else. She stayed there, uh, opened up her home at times to some young people who she mentored. So I just, when I got the news, I was just in shock that we lost a giant in Hamilton County, Francie Pepper. Uh, but I want to let the Peppers know that Francie Pepper, her legacy will never, ever, ever be forgotten. So want to give condolences to them and David Pepper, who once served as a county commissioner right here in the Hamilton County, uh, certainly sending it out to him and the rest of the family. So I know that um, Commissioner Dumis and uh, and Commissioner Dreehouse, I'm sure will have some proclamation or resolution that we'll have at a later time, but her uh, her service, uh, memorial service is this weekend, I believe. And so it's just so, man, we just losing some giants. It's like back to back to back. I mean, Gwen Robinson, I mean, back to back. And they don't make people like this anymore. And so I just wanted to ac- to acknowledge it. Um, also wanted to say that um, gave those dates. Uh, those are just meetings that I had. Those are not as important, but I do want to bring to the attention, you know, we, you know, every day it's gonna heat up about our Bengals deal with the ownership. I want to be clear, this is not the deal with the players. We don't deal with the players. We don't negotiate the players who's gonna be on the field. Uh, we're like everybody else. We speculate and say, we hope we get this one, we hope we get that one. Um, and we're like the rest of the fans. But it's just like when a player has to go in and negotiate a contract, it gets a little dicey. Cause the player got to get the contract before they could actually get on the field and do their thing. And so our contract is coming up. Um, and that lease can be renewed as he is for two more years and they can do that five times. That's a ten year extension potentially on the lease we have now. And I want to reiterate, cause those who might just be joining the conversation and the debate, that this board was not around when this happened. I don't even think I was in politics then. I think nineteen ninety-seven is when it came about. Um, and we're trying to work out of a deal that has been one-sided. Uh, and one-sided meaning that the taxpayers are on the hook for everything, over ninety-four percent. Um, and so we're, we're trying to work out of it. It's tough when they've got ten potential extensions. They'll have to let us know, I believe in June. And when you're trying to work out of that type of hole, anybody that's in business understands that's a very tough thing to do. Uh, but we have been trying to work out of it uh, because the taxpayers, you, as you can see, it's some tough times. The property taxes going up and uh, you know, cost of living is going up and people are losing their jobs, furloughed, forced into retirement. So we're trying to figure out how. So we're trying to figure out how can we give the taxpayers a break? And so you will hear people say, we want a market rate lease. I'm here to tell you, I want a taxpayer-friendly lease. And our job is to negotiate on behalf of the taxpayers. And of course, being an ownership, their job is on behalf of their ownership. And so when you have that, there will be back and forth. When you're trying to get out of a deal where 94% is going to, on the backs of the taxpayers, it might get a little rough because that's what negotiations are. But in the end, we're hoping that we come out with a better deal. However, Bengals ownership in this lease, the keys are in their hands if they want to continue. With that being said, there's a lot going on at the State House. The state, because we understand state got to put some money in. Tennessee, they put hundreds of millions of dollars in, they got to put some money in because we got to change the financial deck. NFL got to put some money in. I'm not talking about chump change. They got to put some money in. They've done it in other cities. And so there was an article that came out, says draft budget amendment tailor-made for the Browns and shuts out the Bengals. And I want to be clear that at the state, I didn't get a chance to meet with the governor when I was the president at that time. And we said, well, listen, we can't be late to the table. We can't be getting the crumbs. I've been in the state legislature, up north gets everything and then down south, we got to fight all the ti, on every issue, not just this. Every issue, they think about us last. I don't care if you're a Republican or Democrat, it's always a fight to get our fair share down here, to get our respect. And so it says, legislators have, someone in the legislature has put amendment they claim is likely an oversight, but that's why we got to keep our eyes on it. Can't say, oh, man, we're broke now. We gave everything to Cleveland. In Cincinnati, we don't have anything available. So we did have a meeting, our board, with our legislators from down here. And we put on the table that we need, we're going to need some money, some help. And we're ahead of Cleveland because Cleveland's going to take empty land and then say, we're going to build around it. And then those dollars will go into helping to pay back a loan. We are already on the banks. And so we already got stuff already up, but we haven't gotten credit for those dollars that we bring in that also the state benefits for. So I know it'll be a lot more, but I wanted to put that out there because I know it made the news. Also made the news, Bengals once again saying, we're slow walking. I'm going to ask Mr. Ludo because I don't want to be slow walking. I've been asking to get down to the business of the lease. And every time they show up, it's, oh, well, can you fix the seats right now for 39 million? And we'll get back to it. And we ran and did the seats. Oh, can you help with the field right now? We'll get back to the lease. We went and put the grass down or whatever they call it, some irrigation or whatever so they can be on the grass. Now they come back, well, can you fix the luxury boxes and we'll get back to you? Oh, can you do the carpet and we'll get back to you? Oh, can you do the elevators to go up to the suites? Not the escalator that goes up to the, what, 300s or whatever? And I've asked Mr. Ludo, and I'm saying this because our commissioners, we don't get to talk to each other per se. I wanted to say that I asked Mr. Ludo that when you're in a negotiation, you usually put a stop to everything and say, let's get down to the paper and the pen. Are you going to, are you going to continue or are we going to be able to get a new deal? We don't just keep à la carton. And then they say to the media, the county is slowing down. I just, I have issues with that. And so maybe we'll have another update at one of our meetings, Commissioner, where we are. But we have been, as a county, and Commissioner, you can attest to this, we have been saying, let's push forward. We asked to do the lease last, what, last year? They said, oh, let's get through the season, is what I was told by Mr. Ludo. So I just wanted to highlight that I'm ready to get out the blank piece of paper, get out an ink pen, and let's get down to the lease. Can we get a deal or can we not get a deal? And I think the taxpayers deserve to know. But Mr. Ludo, when you go in there and we've got this person we hired, I want them to go in with the understanding that Grandma's property taxes went up. They were, they were promised 30% and they need to be able to be good on that promise. We can't keep saying we can't keep the promise. We did it this year and two of us that are here now, we voted for it. We have to vote for it every year. I want, when you go into the negotiation, I want you to remember that there's a gentleman out here trying to take care of his kids and his family and they done cut his hours. I want them to go in and remember that federal employees have lost their jobs when we go in and negotiate these leases. And so that's why I had some concern about this arena, not that I, I want to be clear, I'm not against an arena. But my concern was taking the money that we already in debt with two stadiums, we ain't paid that debt off yet. And now you're saying, go to that same pot. And that's the same pot, we say we can't get to 30% because we ain't got enough money and use that pot for an arena without solving what's on the table that Hamilton County, we're responsible for, whether you like it or not, we're responsible for these two stadiums that we've got to try to pay off. So I wanted to say that, and I also wanted to add concern into the arena that I didn't get to say before. I think the planning that happened before any of us was here is the reason we're in the position that we're in with the arena. Yes, the arena is old. It was good looking 20-some years ago. It's, you know, it's a senior facility now, it's older. But the one thing about the heritage is that, from my understanding, they put up private money. My understanding, they got to pay property taxes. And I would like the new arena to assume the same thing. For new, but can it be privately funded? Can it pay property taxes? And then in Cincinnati, unfortunately, everybody wanted to have their own little arenas. In Louisville, University of Louisville, that's Yum Center. They don't have a campus thing. You go downtown, they play their games downtown Louisville and now they can have concerts. UD Arena, they're not on their campus. You come off the highway before you even get to UD. You can have games and you can have other events. They didn't put it on campus. UC put their arena on their campus. They wanted to have their own. Xavier put their arena on their campus. Centas, we getting ready to go to it. They wanted to have their own. So we got all these little arenas everywhere and we didn't do like some of these other areas and they want to champion these other areas. The problem is, everybody wanted their own little arenas. And now we're at a situation, we're not like Louisville, we're not like UD, and that's why we're in the situation that we're in. I wish we could have collaborated earlier, but we wasn't around. And so that's why when people say, oh, they got it in Dayton, well, they're not on campus. They got it in Louisville, they're not on campus. That's why we're in this predicament. So wanted to just highlight that, Commissioner Dumas, those were the things that I had and I brought up the Bengals thing because it's in the news and I wanted to make sure that it was known that we are not slowing, that I know of. And Mr. Ludo, you can tell us if you are slowing it up. But my understanding from our directive, not to slow up, but to move forward is what I, what I thought. So that's all.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And I just did an interview with one of the news stations and indicated that we're not slowing up anything that we're moving strategically and what we need to do for the county. I have a few things. During this week and a little bit of last week, I participated in the virtual meeting with divert, which is part of Women Helping Women. Very interesting meeting. They're expanding as we speak. We had our opening day parade. I was down there for that, did not walk, but I participated in the viewing and it was just astronomical, the number of people that were there and wanted to have a good time. We need some good times about right now. I participated in the Family Children's First Council meeting. It was their first one for the year. And I remember reading some legislation last, the night before, I think it was House Bill 95 in that the CCAO had asked for an additional 6.5 million for the FCFC, Family Child and Children's First Council, and it was refused. It was not included in the budget for the state. So we'll have to work with what we have. Also had a meeting with David Niermeyer regarding the Metro CEO search. Our current CEO is leaving in June and so he just wanted to get an opinion from me, my insights on what I thought might be a good replacement for David, for Haley, Darryl Haley. And there's no replacement. They really need to have someone that can fit his shoes and also go above and beyond because he has really made a reputation for himself here in the county and nationally. I also had a webinar with Raquel Howard Smith, who's from the YWCA. She's the CEO and she shared with me her visions, her goals. I shared with her the county's visions and goals. She also was interested, Jeff, she has some space where her building is and she said she'd be happy to put about five or six tiny homes there. So I know one of the obstacles I was hearing, we didn't have any land anywhere and she did, and you can talk to her if you'd like, she did volunteer, she'd be happy to have some tiny homes there. And also talked to someone else and there are a lot of tiny homes going up in Columbus. So I'm still looking forward to our first tiny home. And last night I went to a toast to eat, it was a grand opening for 11 units, 11 houses on Forest and Eaton Avenue, which was my playground growing up. The houses are beautiful. I did make the comment because everybody knows I kind of tell it like it is and I thought I was going to affordable housing. And I looked at the website and it said $499,000. And I said, well, in my speech, I said, well, it is affordable for whoever can afford it, you know? But it just shows that there needs to be a diversity of housing. Some people want it, they can't afford their million-dollar home or what, and they want something half of that. The homes are beautiful and it was a great grand opening. And then, of course, the Wentworth Basketball Team, if you're tuning in just now, you didn't see them, but it was just an awesome thing. Commissioner Reese said you invited them here for their state championship. So that turned out very well. I'm a warrior for life and it was just good to see them. And they do such great work currently. I know some people that have some disabled children and they are doing fantastic work with those children. Let me see. Think that will do it for, oh, I wanted to mention about my condolences, as was said earlier. We've had, we have been going to funerals back to back. And so Francie Pepper, I remember going to her home and she was just humble and down to earth and you go wherever you want to go in her house and just a wonderful advocate, as was said earlier. Actually, when you were talking about her visitation, I was thinking, I think I get a break this weekend. So I do. It's April the 12th. Anyone who wants to go to her memorial at nine, yeah, at nine o'clock at Spring Grove and then 11 o'clock will be the service. So, and then Alex Lenzer, his father passed, as was said earlier, and I did also attend that memorial. And lastly, I just have a few things to say. When Job and Family Service gave us a presentation on Tuesday about their balance and where they are as it relates to taking care of our children and how the price of services is going up, but the children are not going down. And we look at our balance as they presented it, great statistics. We have about a $2.5 million balance. Now, the children's levy comes up next year. We haven't decided, you know, if it's going to stay the same, it'll be a renewal or an increase. We have not come to that point. The Tax Increment Review Levy Committee will be reviewing that. But as I've been thinking about it, I don't want us to sit on it. I want us to be proactive as it relates in general to our Hamilton County budget. And we will be having a meeting soon with our staff to look at your budget and your spending practices because we don't want for the bomb to drop. We don't want to all of a sudden say, oh, we're out of federal money, we're out of state money. I want us to be proactive and look at where the money can come from. We don't want our children to be homeless. We don't want the parents to be homeless. And I thought of a few things. There will always be haves and have-nots. As long as we live, there will be some that have more and some that have less. So that's a given. But I believe we are our brother's keeper. Some people say, well, I got mine, you get yours. I don't have that attitude and I think we need not to have that attitude. I believe we are our brother's keeper. If we have more, give more, do more. And also I think that, and I've read this before, that the strong are to bear the infirmities of the weak. So not that you're a weak person, but because it's some of these federal cuts, you've been fired, let go for no reason. And so maybe for whatever reason, your husband is not able to work wherever he worked and now you have to be the sole breadwinner. I have a vision that we need to start asking our for-profit, not, yeah, our for-profit entities, agencies, companies. I was reading on the Business Courier about one company said they'll, they just sold their arena for 100 billion. Another company said they, their revenue was 31.5 billion and they had an increase of 21%. They gained 6 billion. And that's all great. They've worked hard to make that happen. But what I'm hoping and I'm asking Jeff to do with the Finance Department, to look at how these billionaires, millionaires can look at the areas of interest that they have and give to children, our seniors, our veterans. And we need help. We may not need help now, but we will need help. I just see it coming because as we look at the news and look at the television every day, cuts are coming from everywhere. So I don't want to be sitting here and say, ah, we're out of money. So Jeff and I think John is going to be looking at the possibility of our profit, for-profit companies to give more, to be more. And if we just do a little research, I know, for instance, Rumkey, when I used to work with, the senior Rumkey, who's now passed, when I was in Lincoln Heights, his big thing was Boys and Girls Club. He loved Boys and Girls Club. So now the younger Rumkey is running, running the office or the company. We need to approach them. So we have to be very strategic on how we approach them because we know they keep their money close to the breast. And so we just want everybody to participate because the bottom line is going to impact all of us. So that's all I have. That's my editorial for today. So now Jeff Ludo, you have a report or a second comment?
Thank you, Commissioners. Just, I don't have any by leaves today, so just a couple of quick responses on board items. Commissioner, I'll follow up with your office on, I believe it was Ms. Smith that you indicated had some, had some property. So we'll, we'll take a look at that directly and get back to the board on that. We'll also take a look at what, the projects that were going on up in Columbus as well and make sure that we're looking at that as we bring the board back a strategy on that project here in Hamilton County. Commissioner Reese, on your questions on the status of the team negotiations, obviously no, as I think the board is aware, no one is slow walking this process. We've had, we were moving expeditiously, we're moving purposefully on this. We've had direct conversations with team leadership on the, some of the major terms of the lease and the county's perspective on those terms. We're preparing to bring those conversations to an additional level of detail to continue that. We've had direct conversations with the team on rightsizing the capital program so that we have a good understanding of the actual renovation that we're, that we're talking about. We, as Commissioner Reese, as the entire board is aware, we've had direct conversations with the state, with the governor's office on trying to ensure that we get state funding here to offset some of the local property, local taxpayer burden on the stadium. The governor has included a, an element, actually very directly included a, the county's strategy in his government, in his, in the governor's budget proposal. That is now in the House. There's been some amendments made to the governor's proposal. We are aware of the, of the bill that the, in the amendment that the Haslins have submitted and we have a team in Columbus that are working very diligently on making sure that, as both Commissioners are aware, when, when things like this get into the, into the budget process, there's a lot of different proposals that start getting, getting fleshed out. And we want to make sure that we are, in some ways, that we're leading those proposals in some way and at the same time, making sure that we are a part of any other proposal that is made to make sure that the folks here in Hamilton County benefit just the same as they would up in Northeast. just the same as they would up in, in northeast Ohio as well. So we're working on, on, on that as well. So there's a lot more to come on this, but we, no one is slow walking. We're, we're moving expeditiously on this and we'll get the board a fuller report on this in the coming days. That's all I have for, for my comments today, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make one other point. My plan, it's not my plan, it's my thought because I need the whole board to, to buy into this. But as we hear about more federal workers being cut off, my first thought was grab them, get them before they lose a paycheck. For instance, HHS, uh, let go 100 workers here in Cincinnati. I'm not saying that they can be social workers at JFS, but they may, I'm sure they have some skills that the county can use that we've already indicated as, is being funded currently. But I know JFS has many vacancies. So if we can just think and, and move with it, but be strategic on how we do it, that we can grab some of those people that are here locally to have them better in Hamilton County. So that's, that's also my thought, uh, that I would have to, of course, work with my other colleagues and see if there's a strategic way we can do that. So we'll move forward to our regular agen- agenda, the engineer.
Morning Commissioners, Todd Long, Chief Deputy Engineer. Got two items today for you. First item is a resolution authorizing an agreement for the purchase of some right-of-way for necessary improvement at 5280 Foley Road for Project 502404. That's an intersection improvement, traffic signal intersection improvement for Anderson Ferry and Foley. See, property is owned by the Board of Education of Delhi Township School District. The purchase amount is for $1,106. The funding will come from a permissive tax auto funding. And it's to procure the right-of-way necessary to move the traffic signal poles back slightly to base the new footprint for a different type of pole that we're going to be using. Item number two is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding for services between the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and the Hamilton County Engineers' Office to reimburse the sheriff for services to monitor vehicles for their weight provisions, understand what they, um, what, what the vehicles have. If they're overweight in any particular way, that doesn't meet with the law. That helps us be able to protect the safety of the roadway as we travel so that the vehicles are in the proper, um, weight categories. This particular term is from 2025 to 2027. This memorandum of understanding also provides an optional one-year renewal in 2028. Total amount for the, uh, annual amount is $172,000 and the funding is to come from the Road and Bridge Fund. Happily entertain questions on the other item.
Thank you. Any questions? I have one question as it relates to this agreement between, number one, uh, between the Board of Education of Delhi because the number was so low, the 1,000. So how much are they paying?
They're not paying anything. In fact, we're paying them to acquire the property. So it's a small sliver of additional property at the intersection.
So that 1,000, is that a pretty normal price?
It, it's a pretty normal price because effectively it's adjacent to a road right-of-way. It's based on the usage that the property has. So the, the amounts are, are prescriptive based on what the, uh, the auditor's value is and the, uh, the negotiation that we have with the property owner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks. So we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Jeff?
Thank you, Commissioners. I will walk through these quickly but succinctly. Uh, item number three are the administrator's actions for February of '25. Item number four is a budget adjustment largely for state grants dealing with River City, Common Pleas Court, and some engineer projects in the amount of 1.26 million. Item number five is a resolution authorizing, uh, the signature of the property petition for the Downtown Cincinnati Special Improvement District for the years 2026 through 2029. This is the same item that the board heard in staff meeting the other day. This is an average annual cost, assessment cost of $130,322. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the purchase of one truck in county facilities, Item seven is resolution accepting purchase orders and authorizing their execution and release, $688,863. These are purchase orders for 911 software and property appraisal services in the auditor's office. Item number eight is a resolution accepting sales tax charges at River City, $10.05. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the award of an agreement between the commissioners and Buckeye Construction for waterproofing, uh, concrete sealing and waterproofing at Great American Ballpark, $300,062. Item number 10 is the purchase of a Chevy Equinox in the sheriff's office, $25,848. The next two items, Commissioners, items 11 and 12 are the award of a contract, of contracts with Axon Enterprise on behalf of the Prosecutor's Office for item 11 and the Public Defender's Office for item 12. This, this is for evidence, digital evidence and discovery management system in both of those departments that will help streamline our, uh, the electronic receipt and delivery of evidence for cases. In the Prosecutor's Office, that is 1,000, I'm sorry, $1,050,000 over the course of the term, uh, which is a five-year term. Item number 12 is the Public Defender and that is $1,014,000. That is also over the five-year term. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing the award and execution of an agreement to Galls LLC. This is a two-year agreement for uniform and equipment provision to the sheriff's office in a total amount of $6 million. Item 14 is a resolution accepting credit card charges in the amount of $73.63. Item number 15 is an amendment to an agreement with Insight Public Sector related to active directory migration services in Common Pleas Court, $887,000. Item 16 is resolution designating signature authority for individuals in county facilities to sign escrow agreements for capital projects. There's no dollar value associated with that. Item 17 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Recruitment Strategies LLC on behalf of the sheriff's office. This is for consulting services in the amount of $665,000 total over the course of the agreement. Item 18 is a resolution authorizing negotiation and funding agreements on behalf of the Hamilton County between various municipalities for community-based event grantees in the total amount of $250,000 commensurate with the staff meeting presentation the board heard on this item. We have numerous Job and Family Services items. Items 19 through 30 are JFS items. I'll walk through these fairly quickly. Item 19 is group home services with Adonai's Haven of Rest for $500,000. Item 20 is group home services with my brother's keeper, $600,000. Item 21, group home services with Step Higher Inc., uh, doing business as Nella's Place, $450,000. Item 22 is group home services for, with Gateway to Success for $300,000. Item 23 is an agreement for independent living transition services with Lighthouse Youth Services, $500,000. Item 24 is a consulting agreement with Legal Aid Society of Greater Cincinnati. This, I believe, is for our Kids in School Rule Program, $1.6 million. Item 25 is for family placement services. This is a, an assignment agreement and renewal with United Methodist Children's Home, $1.3 million. Item 26 is also an assignment agreement with United Methodist Children's Home for Family Placement Services, $300,000. Item 27 is an assignment agreement with United Methodist Children's Home for Independent Living Services, $1.1 million. Item 28 is an assignment agreement with United Methodist Children's Home for Independent Living Services, $100,000. Item 29 is a renewal with Beach Acres Parenting Center for Parent Education Services, $1.5 million. Item 30 is a, is group home services, an amendment for an agreement with group, for group home services with legacy residential homes, $1.455 million. Item 31 is the annual report of municipal court for the board to receive for the record. Item 32 is authorizing a home project agreement with Herc. These are for affordable housing units in Lincoln Heights, a total amount of $300,000. Item 33 is a report of no objection to four liquor permits from the sheriff's office, also recommending that the board receive this for the record. And that is your consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. I'll open it up for any comments or questions, Commissioner Reese.
Uh, yes, thank you. I just had a quick question. Is the auditor's item on here today or is that another?
Yes, Commissioner, no, that is item, the, if, if we're talking about the same thing, that is, I think you're referring to item number seven. That is, uh, accepting purchase orders in two different departments. There's some 911 software there. There's also the acceptance of an agreement or a purchase order for an agreement for, for property appraisal services, I believe with Tyler Technologies. My understanding, Commissioner, you had a question about that. That is a new vendor that the auditor is working with for the first time. So this does, you had asked, I think, whether there were any, whether this was related to past complaints of, about a vendor. This is a new vendor.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to bring that up because this is the, um, contract of the folks that will be doing the appraisals. And I understand from what I was told that the state, there are only certain ones the state would approve. The one that we had prior to this administrative group had a track record, from what I saw and what I was told, they had a track record of some of the highest appraisals in the state, but they said that was a contract we were stuck in. So I said, I definitely did not want to vote for anything with that company. And so I wanted to make sure this is a new company. I don't know their track record. I hope that they're not, you know, obviously the state has a formula. But when you kind of looked throughout the state from what I was told, ours in some cases were, this company kind of erred on the side of a little bit higher. There were also some errors. And I know we have, uh, uh, you know, in a process and a lot of people going through this appeals process that never been through it at all. They've always paid their property taxes, never had a problem. And so we had to do some educating because if you fill it out wrong, you only get one shot and then you got to wait several years for you to get another shot. But I, I did have someone contact me, a lady that lived in Amber, that lives in Amberly Village and never missed a property tax. It was quite embarrassing to even have to call. But when she ended up getting an appraiser, they said they did a drive-by and there's no way that the house inside, uh, could be bigger than the plot outside. And so anyway, I know they're working on it and the auditor's office is, is working and I appreciate it on some of these cases, but you know, that makes a major difference. And then she said years of paying that. So my point is I'm, I'm happy we're going with the new, at least trying something different.
Commissioner, if I could, um, yes, this is the first time they've dealt with this company. So I think the auditor's office is, um, looking forward to getting a working relationship with them. I believe this particular PO that you're approving today is for a special project where they're doing an analysis of tax exemptions throughout the county to understand if those exemptions are still valid. And to the degree that there are exemptions on property that should not be applied, obviously those, those exemptions coming off the rolls will help the broader tax bases as well. So that's what they're working with them on and under this particular PO.
So this PO is looking to see people who, you know, pay taxes.
Claim exemptions, right.
What about the company that's out here with the high, higher rates than some others? Does that contract come up anytime?
I'll have to follow up with the auditor's office on, on the timing of that, of that agreement, whether it even comes up this year or not.
Okay. Well, I'll move forward with this one, but I want to keep my eye on this other one. And when it does come up, I cannot support that company. We've got to find someone else, at least try something different. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. The other item that's on here is, um, the Improvement District. I will support it. Obviously, our board is three of us and you got to get two votes to, to move forward. I will move forward with it because I had no problem with the ambassadors. Those are the ones that are downtown. I have no problem with them. I do see them. I do see them sweeping and power washing and directing people. And this does not necessarily include the generosity piece, which was a different piece that I also voted for some of the ARPA money to go toward. And I'm looking forward to them, you know, maybe presenting on that piece, but on the piece that's on the calendar right now, certainly support it and will, will be supporting that piece. So I didn't want those two pieces to get confused, but I do support it. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is the, um, small event grants. And I want to thank Commissioner Dumis for coming forward to create this small event grants. And I supported it being created. I supported, uh, all recommendations that have come forward thus far. I did bring up, uh, Golf Manor, but I understand that Golf Manor, uh, someone will at least talk to them, maybe they didn't know how to fill it out properly. And I understand, Mr. Aludo, that you saw the mayor and, and the mayor now is okay with someone coming out there to try to help them, you know, understand how the process works because I think the way they filled it out really kind of hurt them because they are in a business district. So I'm glad that that's going to happen. The others that are on there are certainly, um, support those entities with the small event grants. And like they said, you know, it's three of us, it takes two votes. I'm certainly supportive of it and support, uh, your efforts, Commissioner Dumis, on the small event grants to make sure that those small events and other municipalities get, get support because they need people coming to their jurisdictions as well and spending money in those jurisdictions. So I'm happy to support that as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Just a couple of comments. I noticed as we look at this consent agenda item, um, items 19 through 30 are JFS, um, resolutions that we need to decide, uh, to decide on and vote on. And it's just confirmation, there are millions and millions of dollars in those items, those resolutions. And so it just goes back to what I had spoken, uh, earlier about, we have to be able to continue to provide services for young people. Okay, and so I will move forward, um, and make a motion to accept for the record items three and 31 through 33, and then a motion to approve item four through 30.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further business to come forth?
I think we're good.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thanks.